The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
I call to order the August 10th meeting of the Cary Town Council, and at this time, I would ask that you join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Staff has requested that we hold item eight, a closed session before starting the quasi-judicial hearing this evening that's on tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
To move.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. We have special guests in our audience this evening. Troop 208 is here working on their citizenship in the community badge. If you would stand to be recognized, please. Thank you so much for being here. We now move to the manager's update, and Mr. Stiegel will do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, guests. I'm pleased to introduce our phenomenal town clerk, Virginia Johnson, and our equally phenomenal jack-of-all-trades, I don't even know, assistant to the manager, Allison Hudson. I don't even know what the title is. I don't know, she's just great, who are going to give us a brief update on a request made by Mayor Protem Yerhaugh and Councilmember Robinson several months ago about some changes to our heritage tree program.
Good evening, council. Last year, council approved the legacy program, and it was a great program where people that have created memories in the town, they can have a bench or a tree in honor of them, given a plaque in honor of them. So tonight, we're going to tell you about the progress of that program, and also tell you about an update to an exciting new opportunity available for our citizens. Because in Cary, we know that we have a lot of memories throughout the town, and we want a way to recognize those and also share things that are important to us like trees. So the legacy program is a unique opportunity for the town to offer citizens a way to moralize or honor loved ones, special event, or an organization. So options for these enhancements include park benches or trees, and they are on town property. So if you had a loved one you always walked a greenway with, you could have a bench on the tree or recognize them by putting a plaque on a tree to recognize them. Whoever walks by there will always know that was a special place to someone. So since October, when it was approved, and then when it was looked at again in the winter of 2017, we have been talking about the legacy program internally and how we can get the word out about it. We've been talking about the logistics of the program and how the benches and the plaques will be installed throughout the town. And we've been working on a communications plan. So the legacy gift program, we're working to get the word out by having a giving webpage, and that will include a comprehensive way for people to give to the town throughout, even beyond the legacy program. So there will be the Friends of the Hemlock Bluffs and the Page Walker will be represented on this page, and also other volunteer opportunities. The legacy gift flyers, which you see on your screen, will be at all of our community centers and also passed out at our town events such as Arbor Day and Earth Day.
Thanks, Jenny. So we've talked about how citizens can recognize trees on town property through the legacy program, but I want to talk now about recognizing trees around our community. So a few months ago, as Sean referenced, council asked staff to look into different tree programs in the region. And we researched existing tree programs in other communities, and what we found is that many of the programs limit tree recognitions based upon the size and the species of the tree. So we know that Cary has many amazing trees in our community, and so it was important to us to provide a space for citizens to recognize trees that are special and important to them. Leveraging the town's technology platforms, Esri and Cary Open Data, we have developed an online platform for citizens to upload and share and recognize their favorite trees. So these trees may be significant in terms of the size or the species, but they also could be significant for sentimental or other enjoyment reasons to the citizen. So this website allows citizens to both explore the special trees around them as well as contribute to the online collection by sharing their own special trees. And using Esri mapping, all the trees will be coded with a corresponding location on a map. This will allow us to easily pair the tree mapping data with other types of data, such as greenway routes or other points of interest around the town. We think there are many different ways for this online platform to take root and grow with contributions from our citizens. For example, we can imagine uploading pictures of the legacy trees that had been planted around town to the website, which can then be easily shared with friends and family of loved ones being honored. Going forward, we'd like to take this idea to our citizen boards, particularly the Information Services Advisory Board and the Environmental Advisory Board, to hear their feedback. So we're excited to see how our collection of special trees around Cary grows and evolves from here. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Thank you two for taking this forward. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Yerhaugh?
Just thank you, Jenny and Allison, for doing this. It's very, very creative, this favorite tree program. I think it can be a lot of fun, and I think it'd be a lot of fun for citizens of all ages. I can see everybody getting involved in this. And of course, it does call attention and awareness to one of our precious natural resources, which becomes more precious all the time as we have less and less open space to work with. I think I can go out on a limb and say that our citizens are going to enjoy this very much. I do hope that as this moves forward, that it will grow into a, perhaps, a heritage tree program as such, and that I would like the, would love it if the Environmental Advisory Board would kind of take a look at that and see how it could morph into a heritage tree program. But this is a great start. It's a wonderful idea. I appreciate you doing it.
I agree. And the only thing I thought of as I was looking at this, and I don't, I think these are two boards that you have situated, I would just flip them. I would go to the EAB first, because after decisions and ideas and recommendations are made by the environmental group, then the ISAB can make comments based on those recommendations about how to best implement it. Just a more of a process, but I'm all for it. And I also love that you, you and Technology Services have thought about using Esri, which happens to be on our consent agenda today, for expanding that contract. The combination of those two really makes the Open Data Platform really shine. I think citizens are really going to like this idea. It's a great idea. Thank you for bringing it forward, Jennifer and Ed.
Well, I appreciate, I'm sorry.
I was just going to make it clear for those who don't know the acronyms, EAB, Environmental Advisory Board, ISAB, Information Services Advisory Board.
Yeah, well, I just want to thank Ed for initiating this, so I'm glad that he did. And, you know, I think it also satisfies a couple of the things. One, because so many people have moved here from somewhere else, they don't know how to hook in as far as giving. And this is another opportunity for people to give back to our community and to honor their family. And it also fosters community, and it's really going to help build out our sense of community even greater. So I think it's very good. I think you both did a wonderful job putting this together.
Well, I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I was going to say, another thing we discovered through this process is there's something Jenny can't do. She can't present and take minutes at the same time. So there is something. We've been looking. She is human.
Yeah, she can't see her toes. Her toes are tapping.
Frankly, I'm a little disappointed.
Thank you both very much for bringing this forward. Okay, we now move to the third item on the agenda, and that is Public Speaks Out. If you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I would ask that you sit in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. Three-minute time limit will be strictly enforced, not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium, and when the timer turns from a green light to a yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when it turns from a yellow light to a flashing red light, that means your time has expired, and at that point, I'll immediately interrupt you. To help with an efficient Public Speaks Out item, I would ask that groups have a spokesperson to speak on behalf to reduce repetitive comments. And also, if you would like to speak after the next person at the podium, please stand behind the town clerk to my right toward the stairs and wait for your turn. It also signals that there are additional Public Speaks Out speakers. I thank everyone in our audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud. Make remarks from your seats or anything else that may distract from the meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening. I'm Katrina Hayes, a resident of Cary, a community volunteer, and the mother of a child with autism. I moved to Cary a little over two years ago and fell in love. The numerous and diverse festivals, the movies and live music at Park West Village, and the Mariposa School for Children with Autism showed me love in return. But then things changed. Things started stinking. It got toxic. See, we moved from Fayetteville to Cary, where my son was abused in the school system and regret severely. The school system and their attorneys currently have my home under surveillance. Video, audio, tracking email, my cellphone, and home phone has been tracked. Unwanted items are left at my home, like orders for acid. Yes, acid. A-C-I-D. Trash items are left near my home, my bedroom window, and I have informed the mayor, Mike Bajoric, and the Cary Police Department.
Ms. Hayes, make your comments, please.
Instead of exhibiting effective leadership, they have chosen to turn the other cheek.
Ms. Hayes, I need you to make your comments for the entire council, or you will have to sit down.
There was an officer that visited my son's school and told them that my mental capacity was compromised in order to put me in my place. I am here to inform the public that Cary leadership is not what it purports itself to be. And as you can see, there has been more attention given to the trees than our lives. I also want Cary to know that as long as leadership is allowing families to be targeted for extinction, we will continue to make our voices heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Rachel Zeitler, and I'm the advocacy manager at Habitat Wake. As you all know, Habitat Wake partners with the community to build safe, affordable homes throughout the county. Homeowners work alongside sponsors and community volunteers to build their homes, and then they purchase them with an affordable mortgage. This mortgage is generally paid back over a period of 30 years. Habitat Wake is actually the lender for most of the mortgages, and that can add complexity to our financial statements. The mortgage loans show up as assets on these statements, but they don't represent funds that we can immediately use towards more Habitat projects. In fact, that money trickles down as monthly mortgage payments over 30 years, and then we reinvest it into the community towards more affordable housing. The Community Development Block Grant Funding Application, it's a mouthful, that you're considering tonight would help us build seven affordable homes along Trimble Avenue. We've received some questions about why we're requesting additional funds for this project, and the short answer is that as we decrease the number of homes that we plan to build there, we have fewer units to spread the land and infrastructure costs across. As you consider the funding allocation tonight, I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for the generous support you've given Habitat Wake over the years. Since our founding in 1985, we've built over 600 homes in Wake County, and 54 of those are in Cary. We're really proud of these accomplishments, but what's more important is the opportunity that these 54 homes provide in the community. They're opportunities for a family to improve their economic situation, for a worker to live close to their jobs, and for kids to thrive in school because they have a stable place to go every night. Real examples of Cary citizens who live in Habitat Wake homes include a teacher, a certified nursing assistant, a bank teller, a medical assistant, and a state employee. These people play foundational roles in our community, and housing that is affordable plays a foundational role in their ability to build a life here. Habitat Wake's program enables integral members of the community to afford housing where they otherwise might not be able to. We are so extremely grateful to the town for its partnership in helping us access these opportunities, and we hope to see this partnership continue and grow. So many thanks to each of you for your consideration of this request tonight, and for your service and dedication to the Cary community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Dan Daniel. I'm Director of Development for the Tammy Lynn Center for Developmental Disabilities. I'm here tonight to reintroduce Tammy Lynn Center to you. Founded in 1969, Tammy Lynn Center was designed to serve children with significant developmental disabilities. Forty-seven years later, we now serve about 400 families each year, children and adults with both intellectual and developmental disabilities. We do that over four core programs, one of which is our residential services. It's that area where the Town Council has been so helpful in the past, and where I hope you'll be helpful again tonight. In 2015, you approved a grant for $75,000, which allowed us to purchase and renovate a home that we had been renting here in Cary on Ralph Drive. Photos of that before and after are being circulated. Also, in our annual report, is a feature story of one of the residents who lives in that home. Some of you were able to attend that ribbon cutting last year, and we appreciate that support very much. Two of the residents who live in that home have been residents of the Tammy Lynn Center for 30 years. These are lifetime housing options for folks who would otherwise probably be living in a state institution. Tonight, you're considering another grant that we've submitted that would allow us to purchase a home on Montreal Court. This is a home that we've been renting for 10 years. We've reached an agreement with the owner of that home to sell it to us as an attractive price. This is the last piece of property that we are renting, and so with this purchase, we will own all of the six group homes that we operate. Today, there are four adult men living in that home. Again, two of those adults have lived with us for more than 20 years. By owning this home instead of renting it, we'll be able to guarantee them a lifetime of stability with their residential services. I appreciate your help and ask for your continued support.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? And I would ask if there are others for Public Speaks Out, if you'd please, one at a time, be on the stairs and ready to go, because there's one hour time. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Hector Escobar. I live in Scottish Hills. I am really getting tired of people bashing Cary. You know, the first speaker, the one who came over here, she's free to go. If she don't like it, she can go. I personally experienced Cary as a very nice town, and the police department, very professional. So I take it personally when somebody talks like that. But anyway, go back to the subject. I want to play a small clip.
Past couple of months, Habitat for Humanity of Wake County has been working on plans to build homes on the two-and-a-half acre lot. As our Carly Griffith reports, after hearing feedback from neighbors, a compromise may win the day.
It seemed like a great family environment.
Bailey Garbutt and his wife live in a Habitat for Humanity-built community in Cary. Both grad students, they moved into the home.
Is there anything wrong with this picture? Two young, healthy people with a college degree living in the Habitat house, asking for funds to leave an affordable home. Why they don't give it to veterans, or police officers, or fire departments, or somebody who is disabled? Why they have to give these houses to people who are completely healthy, probably stronger than me, speak better English than me, and they have to pick up the fruit to other people's labor? This is the type of people they help. They have failed miserably to convince me that they are an honorable institution. Why don't you help the seniors? Why don't you help the disabled people, disabled kids? They got nothing but you. These are the people, they got two hands, they got an education, they can get a job. So my question is, I still got a minute, I would like to please consider all the institutions that really need the money. I take it personally when Habitat was bashing my neighbor. Habitat is the type of organization that not only want my hand, they want my arm and my leg. What I got news for them, I got my foot. That's the only thing I can give them. Because they haven't built any, they haven't built a bridge with us, and they still come back here for more money. I don't want to give them anything. I want to give it to somebody who really needs that. And in my view, they don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Sheri Shepherd. You've seen me before. I live in Scottish Hills. I am here today to address the CDBG funding that is being requested tonight for the Trimble Habitat for Humanity project. Per the Town of Cary rules surrounding the CDBG funding, it indicates the need for a public hearing when the scope of a project changes significantly from the action plan. Applicants demonstrate leverage of their funding with CDBG dollars, and applicants can cover any unexpected expenses. I have three questions for Town Council regarding this. One, given the significant reduction in the number of homes to be built for this project, 23 down to seven, does the Town Council not consider this a project change worthy of another public hearing? Two, Habitat Wake indicated on their application and during the rezoning hearing their ability to secure other funds, other sources of funding. Has the Town Council done their due diligence in holding Habitat Wake accountable to this, as it is Town Council's responsibility to maximize CDBG money to benefit as many organizations as possible per the Cary community plan? Number three, since Habitat Wake, by choice, has continued to pursue rezoning of this property after the significant reduction in the number of families served, and conversely, is now requesting additional funding, is it not the current, is not the current request considered an unexpected expense, and therefore worthy of further discussion before a decision that deprives other organizations of funding is made? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Yular, and I live in Scottish Hills. Per the staff report for tonight, the report from John Donnasy and the CDBG blank application, the deadline for requests in 2018 for that money was March 3rd. As you can see from the cover letter that I handed out, their application was dated March 9th, six days later. Should the application even have been considered, given it was submitted after the deadline and vital information is missing? The application is incomplete, as it should include the number and cost per beneficiary, and that has been omitted. Was this detail overlooked or ignored during the decision-making process? If the date had been extended, why would an application have been accepted on the same day the community meeting was held on these funds at White Oak Church? Under Section 4 Budget Justification and Leveraging, applicants should demonstrate that the funds are leveraged with other sources, resources. The leveraged funds discussed as related to other CDBG money, not other resources. Kevin Campbell reported at the rezoning hearing that Habitat has other sources of funding. Application indicates a financial capacity of $16 million for fiscal year 18. The leverage information is missing and misleading. The amount of money, funds already allocated to this project totals $283,500. This is noted on the fiscal year 2018 AAP. Is HUD supposed to put two and two together? If the Town Evaluation Committee knew the number of beneficiaries as a fraction of what it was when the project was first submitted for funding, would it receive the same number of points in the scoring system that it did at the beginning? How can it even be scored when the cost per beneficiary is missing? Section 5 Financial Standing requires a copy of the organization's auditor's cover letter. No indication that this was included. Beneficiary information, criteria from the town application, total number of beneficiaries, no indication this was included. The cost per beneficiary has skyrocketed with the drastic reduction in number of homes. Is this the best use of additional funds? Is putting in additional $135,000 that is desperately needed by other organizations towards this project sending the right message? The Scope of the Proposal, Part 3 of the TOC application. In bold, it asks for, "Discuss the cost per beneficiary in relation to private and other organizations delivering similar services. Discuss outreach efforts, partnerships, and other resources." No indication that any of these items were included in the application. According to the chart in the staff report, the request was for $50,000, and that matches the final 2018 CDBG fund request. We have found documentation that the original amount requested was $340,000. There has been no correspondence received about an application change to $135,000. How did you get to $135,000? Has there been accurate record-keeping? The evaluation committee will review the first proposal in compliance with the minimum information. This is a missing section of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Judy Foley. I've been here before, speaking to y'all. My concern is with the proposals that were sent to me by the people that are monitoring what's going on with the Habitat project. There seems to be an issue, a thing that I'm worried about. The Caring Place had asked for $80,000 and was given none. And when I look at just the last few days, who's involved in the Caring Place? I like what I see with those people. I like that they have, they have 10 houses that are desperately needing help, and they're ready to go, but they're waiting for help. While we're going through all this time and effort trying to chase what Habitat should or shouldn't do, I know that they have other sponsorship all over the county. They have corporate, more corporate sponsors than Caring Place does. I like the idea of charity begins at home, and the people in Cary should be supporting the Caring Place. It's a Cary charity, and they're ready to go. All you have to do is call them up and say, here's your money. And I have a feeling they would be very happy if you would give them some money. And while we're waiting for Habitat to figure out what they can or can't do, somebody else is ready to spend the money in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hey, good evening. My name's Sharon Tobias. Tonight, I'm here not as a label of where I live, but just as a Cary citizen. Our concerns tonight during public speaks out regarding additional CDBG monies for Habitat is a reflection of concerns we've had since this project was first introduced to us. This didn't start, over this rezoning, we all started delving into CDBG. But you set the ground rules for zoning. You said you can't consider the applicant. So we couldn't consider the CDBG until it came time to come in front of the council and make the decision about who gets money. So that's why you see us again. This is nothing new. We've had our concerns for months, but it wasn't appropriate to bring up during the rezoning process. The, after the last meeting, because, believe me, when I realized I was coming here again tonight, I want to take a minute to address the mayor's blog after the last council meeting, although not surprising the information provided was very one-dimensional and served to only perpetuate the misconceptions surrounding the issue. Although we did speak against continued funding of Habitat, the reasons why we're left out, which leads to the perception that this continues to be about our neighborhood and affordable housing. It totally ignored the many issues and concerns surrounding the management of grant money, the cost of the land, which was way above market value, and that is cited as a reason for additional money? And the lo and behold, we decreased in size and all of a sudden, we need more money? These are experienced developers. Experienced developers know when they incur increased cost. And as the rules say around CDBG, is this continued funding for a proposal, a project? Or is it considered an unexpected expense? And it's very clear that the applicants for the money should be prepared to cover unexpected expenses. In contrast, let's look at a project that wasn't funded or not recommended for funding. Evergreen Construction proposed 42 units of low-income senior housing, and what they got was recommendations for a $250,000 long-term loan. Forty-two units, didn't get funding. Seven units are now approaching almost a half a million dollars. That's why I tell you, I'm not here as a Scottish Hills resident. I'm here as a concerned federal taxpayer, Cary resident, about when are we going to get off the bus and stop the insanity over this project? Anybody else on the outside looking in would be really surprised at what's been going on over the last months. So with that, I ask that we reconsider how this project's being funded, and is there more responsibility? That Habitat, on their application, stated $16 million they can access for FY 2018, and lets fund some other projects that are grassroots for the citizens of Cary and aren't going to fund graduate students living in Habitat houses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you, folks? My name's John Cooper. I've been a resident of Cary for 20 years, and I'm here to make a couple of comments about the Caring Place, which a couple of other speakers have spoken about. And I've helped out in maintenance-type programs for about the last 10 years with the Caring Place. Now, I don't hold any title with the Caring Place, except maybe a lawn mower, a toilet repair person, a locksmith, no title other than that. I also don't know much about grants. In fact, I don't really know how the Town Council, the Town Council works. This is only the second time in my 20 years in the town that I've ever been to a Town Council meeting. But I do know a lot about the Caring Place and its paid staff of four people and its volunteer group of 150 people. Now, when we discuss projects, like when I was in business, there are only really two questions. What are the projects that we need to undertake, starting with the biggest ones? And where the hell are we going to get the money to do it? And guess what, folks? We just never have enough money for the 30 families that we support each year that go through our system. So things just fall off the table. We do appreciate the Town of Cary's help. Year after year, we come to the trough where Cary's, the Town of Cary's help. And we promise to use all the funding, any and all the funding, now and in the future, in very purposeful ways. I'm a very big customer of the Restore and the Dorka Shop, where I shop for everything I need for maintenance to minimize on the budget, because we all have more needs and our families have tremendous needs. Our families show up routinely with shopping bags, not because they went to Harris Teeter, but it's everything they own because they slept in their car last night. Thanks. Thanks for your help.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron, 7917 Holly Springs Road, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27606. I apologize for my casual attire, but I was here as an interested citizen in the CDBG discussions. And I'm actually not here to talk specifically about Habitat for Humanity and the funding that they have requested, but I can tell you, and obviously I worked with Habitat towards the tail end of the zoning process, as you all know, I do a lot of work with private developers. And infrastructure costs are fixed for a project, whether you have one unit, or 10 units, or 100 units. And the density conversation that we have with you all, in each and every case that I'm involved in, that is fundamental, and that is the premise of the developer's desire to get more density. That is to spread the costs of infrastructure over the number of units that they're seeking. So the fact that the request for additional money has gone up as a result of the density going down doesn't surprise me at all. And again, I'm not in the, I'm not in the weeds on the funding associated with this particular project. I don't pretend to be. But I can tell you, I'm not surprised that the cost would go up as the density has gone down. And so, and I could also add, none of my private developer clients would look at a site for 23 townhomes and be able to negotiate down to a deal for eight single-family homes. I mean, the significant decrease in density associated with that would result in not having a project. And so I just wanted to add a little bit of color commentary associated with my experience with private development and the role that infrastructure costs and density plays in how sites get funded and how development projects happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Kathy Davis. I live on Balmoral in Scottish Hills. I had not planned to speak here tonight. First off, the 23 houses, nobody ever expected them to get that. They cut it down to 16 real quick, and then nine, and then to make sure they got it, they cut it to seven. So this saying, we wanted 23, that's just a red herring. And in any, oh, I, many years ago, we started throwing table scraps out for a stray cat. Five years later, that stray cat would not touch staple, table scraps. I feel like we're facing that with Habitat. Every time we've been here, they've asked for more. They've asked for property, and it's been assured it won't be a problem. They've asked for money, and now they're asking for more money. This will never end. It will continue. And if they decide they want more property for more houses somewhere, and I can assure you, it won't be in Preston or any of those areas, they are still going to be coming here. There are many places, the Caring Place and senior housing, that are in dire need of money. They do not have millions of dollars to go to, to call on. And saying that it's going to be 30 years before, when these mortgages are paid off before they can reinvest that money, that's another red herring. They've got the money. They're getting it from grants, from volunteers, from donations. They don't have to wait 30 years to get this money. So saying that was just false. There are many good charities that are helping people who need houses, who need housing. And Habitat has received their money. It's time for them to continue getting their money from the other sources they said they had. And it's time for the Town of Cary to look at the senior housing that needs to be done, the group housing, and other charities that need money and do not have another place to get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My clock is already going. Hi, my name is Brian Blockle. I've lived in the Town of Cary since 1993. I am against Habitat getting this extra funding. Going into the whole project, through the series of meetings, I probably made about six meetings on this topic, and I was very disheartened at the end of last meeting, when the council kind of summarized what was going on and what our concerns were. And they never mentioned the word density. They used a different word to describe what our concerns were. All along, our concerns were about density. The zoning committee, who had voted that we should relook the issue about two meetings ago, said that one of the issues that they agreed with us on is that whatever project goes in there should fit the neighborhood. And we always looked at the fuzzy math involved in the decision of, there's four houses across the street, and at one time, there's going to be 23 units across from it. And then it kept getting plea bargained down, and I guess somebody thought that that was good enough, and we should just suck it up and be happy. You never mentioned density in the summary, summation, when you summarized the last meeting. And one of the council members even went so far as to say, well, you should be happy, you're at least going to get a brick face on the foundation. I mean, a lot of other people don't get that. That wasn't really what we wanted to hear. So density's the issue, and density is the thing that seems to be the thing that Habitat is now using to get more money. All along, if Polte wanted this property, and they want to put 23 units, everybody would have said, no. Got to put four units in there, the way it was zoned. People said, well, the R40 was the big thing, and I was told that that was just a placeholder, and then that's been plea bargained down. But all along, I've been concerned about the density. I think Habitat is a worthy organization for what they do and how they do it. I really feel that the neighborhood got a black eye over the discussion, which should have been a free conversation between the concerns of the citizens, no matter where they live in Cary, and this board, and that was distorted by the media. I'm not blaming you for that. But I think in the last summation, summarization, when you guys said it was all about other things other than density, I wanted to scream the word out, but I was afraid of getting arrested. You guys minimized that concern. All along, it was about the number of units, and maybe Habitat shouldn't have looked at this property if they didn't want to help us, be a better partner by having the same amount of units. Somebody also bought out during their time about houses being this close apart, you know, those kind of things. We've been concerned about density the whole time. So thank you for your consideration, but I don't think a special exception should be made for Habitat. I think they have other resources, and if they didn't get their paperwork in on time, just like my time's running out, it should not be considered.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Judy Blockle, same address as my husband. Concerns, you talked about the trees and how beautiful the trees are, and we're trying to save trees and stuff. How many trees are you taking down on Balmoral? I mean, on Trimble? Hundreds of trees there. So if you're talking about trees in one project, then think about the trees here also. I agree that Tammy Lynn should get money, the senior homes, Karen Homes should be getting our money. I don't agree that Habitat should be getting any of this money. To this day, they have over $20 million. Let them use their money, not Town of Cary's money. That's really all I want to say, is don't give them the money. Give the money to the people who really need it, the charities, the people. I volunteer at a Christian group, and they give money to women who are pregnant and have no homes. They give money to women coming out of prison. They give them clothes. I mean, give it to the community that needs it. I volunteer for this community as a public person. I volunteered with the Boy Scouts for 13, 15 years as a leader from Cub Scouts into Eagle Projects. So I've done my volunteering, and I know what this community can do. Please give money to communities that are helpful to here. Habitat has money. Let them use their money, not yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for public speaks out? Last call. Close public speaks out, and we now move to our consent agenda. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items on the consent agenda. And the only item we have on the consent agenda is the ESRI Small Municipal and County Government Enterprise License Agreement. Would council members like that pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second?
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move the public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for public speaks out with one exception. Instead of three minutes, you now have five minutes to speak. Our first public hearing is item 5.1, which is 17REZ15 Old White Oak Church Road Assemblage. Staff will introduce this item. Council will not take action on this item tonight, but will refer it to our advisory board, called the Planning and Zoning Board, and the item will return to the council at a future date for our decision at that time. Introducing this item is Ms. Granon.
Good evening. Thank you, council. For your consideration is a request to rezone four parcels located on Old White Oak Church Road. They comprise approximately 10.2 acres. Subject property is highlighted in yellow. It's located south of a future Town of Cary park site and north of Ridgeback Road. Here's a zoomed-in aerial view of the subject property. It is developed currently with three detached residential dwellings, and there is one vacant parcel. The existing zoning is Wake County Residential 40. The proposed zoning is Residential 12, conditional use. Conditions proposed by the applicant would limit the use to detached residential and neighborhood recreation, would limit the density to a maximum of 2.25 dwelling units per acre, and would propose 5,000 square feet of community gathering space. This would be double what is required per Cary's Land Development Ordinance for a development of this size. Taking an initial look at the request and comparing it to the policies of the Imagine Cary Cary Community Plan, we'll be focusing our attention on the live policies, whether or not this proposal maintains neighborhood character and offers a variety of housing choices. We'll also be looking at the shape policies, whether or not this request makes appropriate transitions with some of the existing development, and if it's a good infill and redevelopment parcel. Cary's growth framework map designates this as a suburban neighborhood. And in addition, this property is also located in the Green Level Special Planning Area. Policy 1 talks about maintaining land use transitions. So again, we'll be looking at this lot size that's proposed with the R12 in relation to what's surrounding it and what's proposed. Policy 2 talks about respecting heritage and open space. So the fact that the applicant has offered to double the community gathering space area is worth noting as we look at this evaluation. And then we're also going to look at the footnote for the Green Level Special Planning Area, which designates this as a neighborhood west of Flat Branch. This is where the aggregate gross density should not exceed 2.5 dwelling units per acre. So the density cap of 2.25 is in keeping with that goal and that policy. The predominant use is detached residential, and the suggested minimum lot size is a quarter acre. Some smaller lot sizes is appropriate with cluster development, but with the R12, that looks as though at this that looks as though at this stage, it's in line with the Cary Community Plan. The site does have a small area that's impacted by a stream buffer, according to Cary's most recent GIS maps, and field determination of that feature will be required at the time of development plan review. It's in close proximity to the American Tobacco Trail, and as I mentioned earlier, immediately south of a future Town of Cary park site. The subject property is located in close proximity to White Oak Church Road and to Ridgeback Road, which are both collector roads. There are no current transit routes in the vicinity in walking distance of the subject property. Property owners within eight hundred feet of the rezoning request were notified by mail, and the property was posted and advertised. At the neighborhood meeting in June, several residents attended, and their concerns for the applicant focused on the future maintenance of Ridgeback Road. They wanted to know what the density was proposed, and then they had questions for staff that attended the meeting about Cary's buffer standards and what greenway connections would be required. Since this neighborhood meeting, staff has not received any emails or phone calls on the request. So, this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is available, and following the public hearing, I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granon. This time, I'll invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Mayor and members of the council, I'm Pam Davison with Bateman Civil Survey Company. Tonight, I'm here representing the applicant. Staff did a wonderful job explaining the proposed zoning request. Our request basically is to rezone the property from Wake County, R forty W, to R twelve Conditional Use, with the conditions being detached residential and recreational, cap the density at two point two-five dwelling units per acre, and provide double the required community gathering space at five thousand square feet. This proposal clearly meets the vision for both the suburban category and the Green Level Special Planning Area, and complies with several policies and goals found in the Cary Community Plan. The minimum twelve thousand square foot lot size and maximum density provides appropriate transition to adjacent larger lot subdivisions while maintaining the neighborhood character of the area. The minimum lot size and density cap respond to the needs of new residents, current demographics, and the evolving priorities by offering flexibility in lot sizes while meeting the policy guidelines. This lot size also introduces a lot size compatible with surrounding area but not currently available in the general vicinity, and hopefully will appeal to young professionals and young families, which was another goal of the community plan. Rezoning will help provide an adequate supply of housing suitable for growing diversity of housing types with close proximity to schools and recreation, determined to be of high importance in the Cary Community Plan. Specifically, residents will be walkable to White Oak Elementary School, the American Tobacco Trail, and the future park to the north of the property. By doubling the area provided community gathering space and setting a two point two-five dwelling unit per acre density cap, this development will respect the heritage of the area and maintain valuable open space. The criteria for suburban neighborhood development are met with this rezoning, and the proposed rezoning provides housing in close proximity to parks, schools, and greenway systems while preserving the existing environmental features and holding to the high development standards expected here in Cary. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Davison. This time, I'll open the public hearing for seventeen, whoops, I'm on the wrong one, seventeen REZ fifteen Old White Oak Church Road Assemblage, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. We're going to send this to our Planning and Zoning Board. I just want to make a comment, because we had some speakers earlier tonight that say we don't discuss density and zonings. Those R numbers, like on the map, you'll see R twelve CU, that means twelve thousand square foot lots, that's your density. CU means conditional use, which means setbacks and side distances can change. That's what that is, and I apologize if that's confusing, but I just wanted to make sure those in attendance understand what we're talking about when we're talking about these rezonings and what those letters and numbers mean. So, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board. Are there any comments or questions from council at this time? Nope? All right. We'll move to our next item, another rezoning. But before we do, I want to make sure I correct something I've done, because we had special guests that we recognize in the audience, and they usually stay about an hour, hour and a half, and we're approaching the hour. And there was one group I didn't mention, and if they're still here, I would ask that they stand. Girl Scout Troop Thirty-four Eighty-eight, are you still here? And if you are, could you please stand and be recognized? I think they're up there in the corner, and they're shy. Thank you for being here.[937.12][937.12](Laughter/Applause). And I apologize for not catching this note earlier. Now, we'll move to our next rezoning. I'm sorry about that, which is item five point two. It's seventeen REZ twenty, Piney Plains Resoning. Ms. Dry will introduce the item, and council once again will not take action on this rezoning. Instead, we're going to refer to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. Ms. Dry.
Good evening, council. For your consideration is a request to rezone two properties consisting of approximately four point seven acres at twenty-four-ten and twenty-four-sixteen Piney Plains Road. The site, highlighted here in yellow, contains two properties. It's adjacent to the Wellington Place subdivision, which is immediately to the west, and across from the lodge, Crossroads Apartment Complex across the street on Piney Plains Road. Each site contains one detached dwelling. Got some pictures of the houses on the properties. The current zoning for these properties are Residential Forty or R forty, and this site is located within the Swift Creek Watershed Protection Overlay District. The applicant's requesting to rezone the properties to Transitional Residential Conditional Use. This zoning change would keep the land use as residential, but would allow an increase in density of up to six dwelling units per acre. It would also allow a different housing type. They're proposing townhomes or semi-attached detached dwellings. So, following up on that, the applicant's proposed to limit the use to the semi-detached attached dwellings, townhomes, and neighborhood recreation. They're also proposing to increase the minimum required community gathering space to twelve, twelve hundred square feet, which is twice the minimum requirement that the LDO sets for a site of this size. So, as the case progresses, staff will be evaluating the rezoning with aspect, with regard to aspects of the Imagine Cary Community Plan, and the evaluation will include looking at plan policies and the site's Future Growth Framework Map designation. And a preliminary analysis of the site has found that the site and the proposal are applicable to policies found in the live chapter and the shape chapter. Specifically, the applicant is requesting TRCU zoning district, which would allow for semi-detached attached homes or townhomes. With the product type being proposed, the request would allow for a new house subcategory in the area, which consists, with the area which consists primarily now of single-family homes to the west, to the north, and to the south, and multifamily homes to the east. Regarding the policies about infill and redevelopment, the site is partially ringed by existing subdivisions, individual large lot detached dwellings, and multifamily apartments across the street. So, this development, if approved, may serve as a transition between the existing single-family homes and the apartments across the street to the east. The development category for the site is in the traditional neighborhood area. Traditional neighborhood is generally viewed as having a moderate amount of differing housing types, including single-family detached patio homes, townhomes, and multifamily housing and master plan communities. Transitional Residential Conditional Use, as in this case, can be appropriate in the traditional neighborhood category, depending on the context and the types of conditions that are being offered. And I should also note the opposite, the opposite side of Piney Plains Road is in a destination center, and thus, higher density would be expected in this portion across the street. This image is from the town's Interactive Development Map, which shows nearby development activity in the area. You can see the site, which is indicated here along Piney Plains Road. The properties and sites which are indicated in green are either recently approved rezonings or rezonings that are currently going through the process. The sites in yellow are other development activity in the area. According to the Town of Cary GIS map, the site may be impacted by stream buffers just in the northwest corner. Field determination of the features, however, would occur at the time of development plan review. According to the Parks, Recreation, Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan, which is identified in the Engage Chapter of the Imagine Cary Community Plan, there's no new public parkland or greenways proposed on this subject property, but you can see their existing and proposed greenways in the, in the area. According to the Move Chapter of the Cary Community Plan, Piney Plains Road is a five-lane thoroughfare, and there is an existing go-triple route, transit route, and a future go-cary route along Piney Plains Road in front of the property. If the rezoning was approved at the time of development plan review, the following buffers would be required for the site. A forty-foot Type A opaque combined buffer would be required along the northern, western, and southern property lines, all which currently abut existing single-family homes. There would also be a fifty-foot Type A opaque streetscape required along Piney Plains Road. There was a neighborhood meeting held at Town Hall on July twelfth in twenty seventeen. There were nearby residents and attendants at this meeting, and there was general discussion about the request, a lot of interest in what the town regulations were, specifically in regard to buffers and streetscapes. There was questions about what the town requirements were for stormwater, tree preservation, road improvements, things like that. There was also questions about transitions that would be required between the proposed site and the existing single-family homes which abut the property. So, properties within eight hundred feet of the subject site were notified at the public hearing, and the property was posted with public hearing signs and ads placed in accordance with the Town of Cary Land Development Ordinance. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share comments on the rezoning, and following that, staff will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. This time, I'd invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Mayor and members of the council, my name is Jay Galise of Hugh Jay Galise Associates. I live here in Cary, and I represent the applicant. I don't think I could do any better than staff did. I mean, we're in a transitional area. This is new place that we're coming up, given the forty-foot buffers, given the streetscape, the thoroughfare, destination across the street, and the single-family behind. I think we are a good fit to start this off with six units an acre on this area. So, also, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about how it's going to work. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Galise. Now's the time for the public hearing for seventeen REZ twenty Piney Plains Resoning, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and then open it up to council members for questions or comments, and since I live very close to there, I'd be glad to start first, and would ask Ms. Dry if you could go to slide.
It looked like somebody was interested.
Would you like to speak? I am sorry. Please come forward.
Somebody has to speak first.
No, no, no. I'll reopen the public hearing. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
It's a little late.
That's okay.
I'm Rex Frazier, own property on Piney Plains Road. I apologize for my appearance. I just left the hospital of my daddy, who was just recovering from a little unexpected. But anyway, I'm here tonight, and I support the proposed rezoning. We own adjacent land to the property rezoning. I messed it. Our land is adjacent to Piney Plains Road, a church on one side, and across the street, apartments. And access will be limited, because we just have a couple lots there. Based on the adopted Cary Community Plan, we want to have the opportunity to develop our property in a similar fashion as to what is being proposed on this property. If the rezoning is approved, any development occurs on the adjacent property, we need to provide access with a street and sewer stub to our property. The manhole is down the street from us and in front of these proposed property. The sewer line, we need to maintain the lowest elevation as possible so it will work for us. We ask that the council and staff consider this and how the stormwater would work best for all of us also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I hope somebody has to speak first.
Anyone else for this public hearing? Anyone at all? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing again. Well, let's try this again. This is very interesting, and I think as a council, we're going to see a lot of these in the future. There's a lot of roads with mid-century homes, ranch-style homes, and the first domino, so to speak, is going to determine probably how the rest of it goes. So, we really need to think about that rather, not rather than, in addition to the rezoning that we're thinking about. I think of Walnut Street, where we had the one or two ranch styles and were replaced with three single-family homes. I'm thinking, how's that going to determine the rest of that stretch on that side of the road? Would you build multifamily next to that? Would you build what? And I think the same sort of thing is going to happen here, so that's my only, not caution, but something we ought to pay attention to as we move forward, and I'll be welcome.
Yeah, I guess we, you say we kind of live dear each other, so we.
It's about a half a mile from my house, so I see it every day.
So, maybe technically by a quarter of a foot, I'm closer, but (laugh). Yeah, your concerns are, you know, right on as you go down that street, and, you know, as a matter of fact, many of those homes, the folks have passed on, and they're in estates, and they're going, they're going to be assembled, and they're going to be put together. So, the exact thing that you were talking about, excuse me, was on my mind. In reviewing this case, if we're looking at that first domino, what you have is an example that can be set with conditions, and that's up to the applicant to do, where it's lower density, extraordinary buffers, the lots shaped where they have a good visual view of the road, they don't clash with the neighbors. The neighbors you have in Wellington are going to have an extraordinary buffer, including the play area and the green space and so forth. The way it's being designed, it's looking like it's going to be a community among, within itself, with a lot of open space around it, a lot of walking trails, and so forth. So, my understanding is, and I'll just leave it at that, that's my understanding, that there's a lot of pressure in this assemblage for folks to put together a lot of that remaining property and then cram in all of that high density that you're worried about, and so am I, and that I think it would destroy the look and feel of Piney Plains. That said, having the first domino come in that is well-thought-out, protects the neighborhood, and is not at the most extreme density that it could be, gives us some hope that we might be, what we might be having here with the right conditions is something that could be that first domino to the positive. And, you know, rest assured, we've got to go through this process, we've got to listen to the folks and all that, but I was really encouraged at looking at the thought behind this plan versus what it could be, and that gives me hope for it, but at the same time, it has to go through the whole process, it has to go through P and Z, but I think, I think we may be on to something here.
Okay. Other comments or questions before we send it on?
I do have one question. On the, on the road part, if I'm, if I'm reading, the Bent Berry Way that comes in from the north that's separated by a couple of more lots, was that a stub with intended future connectivity right there? Or is that a, I know there's no bulb, I just couldn't see from Google Earth what was on there. see from Google Earth what was on there.
I'd have to see if someone from Transportation and Facilities can speak to that.
Ken Dunn, Transportation and Facilities. Yeah, Bent Berry is expected to need to stub down that way, so they would, at site plan, we would work out something to connect up. There'd be a space there, but when something came in between, we'd wanna see that connected up.
Okay, that helps a lot. And through that forty-foot buffer, there would be the connectivity, but perhaps, if I understand, if the, the next lot went to the similar density, this buffer's gonna stay with this, this lot, because it's conditioned on the land, they'd have to reapply if they wanted to change a buffer, and, but if they went to the same, then the people on the other side would take advantage of this buffer rather than having to do their own.
Well, the, the buffers are determined at the time of development plan review, and it would be based on the use of the adjoining property and their proposed use. So whatever's in place at the time that the development plan goes, goes through would be the buffers that would be required.
So if somebody to the north after this goes through, if they go for the similar density, then they may have no buffer requirement because they'd be similar, this development to the south.
Potentially. It could all depend on the timing, and then there, there could also be activity where the, the two developers work together to, you know, potentially share the buffer.
So if they decide to share the buffer, then it won't come back to us for the, for buffer, for a condition?
It shouldn't.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Well, just as a follow-up, I think that's why, because of that potential exposure of all that other development, again, we can't ask for conditions, but, you know, as we always say, we can't base it on who, you know, the, the land could flip. So the critical thing for this being the first domino is it has to put our mind at ease that it's the right domino and that the conditions are, are pretty restrictive from my perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, this will go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation, and will come to council at a future date. Thank you, Ms. Dry. We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item in order is in order to demolish and remove the dwelling at two oh nine Maryland Circle. Mr. Smith will present the item to council, and we may take action. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, council. Tonight, we're before you to ask that you adopt an ordinance ordering the demolition and removal of the house at two oh nine Maryland Circle. Maryland Circle is a healthy and established neighborhood located off of Old Apex Road. The subject property is highlighted in yellow on this map. Unfortunately, this property has been allowed to deteriorate and has been abandoned for a number of years. It is currently in foreclosure. According to the Wake County Property Prazer's Office, the house has a building value of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and one dollars. Nearly all the structural systems of the house, the roof, the floor, electrical, and deck, need major repairs to bring it to minimum housing standards. The foundation in particular is buckling and making it really unfeasible to repair. We have determined that the cost of repairs would exceed fifty percent of the value of the house, which meets the definition of dilapidated, and gives the town the authority to demolish the house if the owner is not in compliance. There are pictures of the condition of the house and other details in your staff report. Again, staff's recommendation is for council to adopt an ordinance ordering the demolition and removal of the house at two oh nine Maryland Circle. The ordinance is in your staff report. After tonight, if you adopt the ordinance, we will provide the owners an additional thirty days in which to comply, and if not, the town will demolish the house and place a lien on the property to collect the demolition cost. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I know that the demolishing and removing a dwelling is a very serious item, and the residents that live around this structure are very upset and have every right to be, but could you just tell me very briefly what requires us to take so long? There are a series of steps. Are those federal steps? Are they state steps? Are they local steps we have to go through to make this happen?
They are local, but the minimum housing ordinance is authorized by state statute, and most of those time periods are in the state statutes that we have stopped. And so we, due process requires us to give the owner notice to comply, and that's, that's a two- or three-month process. And, and then, in this particular case, the foreclosing bank asked for an extension to allow them to foreclose, and they were going to demolish the house, but the foreclosure has not happened, and because of the neighborhood interest, we feel like we need to move forward.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Just a question. What happens after we demolish it? Is it just, I don't know, available for somebody to purchase? I'm just kinda curious of next steps.
Is the bank still gonna own it despite foreclosure?
Yeah, I just...
The bank will, the bank will fore, probably foreclose, and they'll have a nice empty lot to build a new house on. The house, the lot is actually worth more than the house is currently.
Okay, wow, that's what I thought.
I received at least one letter from a neighboring citizen who has concerns about safety, if there's asbestos in the house or varmints in the house, you know. How, can you go over kind of what you do to make sure that any risk is mitigated while you demolish the property?
We have to, dealing with asbestos, we have to get an asbestos test and comply with asbestos removal. We've also had neighborhood, neighbor express concerns about the existing trees around the house, and we'll do our very best to save those trees as well.
Okay.
Mr. George?
I was, I appreciate the, the comments of the neighbors and the numerous letters and calls I've received, but I would certainly like to, to make a recommendation, make a motion.
Please, go ahead.
That we adopt the ordinance ordering demolition and removal of the structure located two oh nine Maryland Circle.
A second?
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
We now move to our next item. It's an amendment to the Town of Cary Traffic Schedule fifteen. Mr. Spencer will present the item, and council may take action.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. School speed zones are an integral part of the town's transportation system as they promote safer travel for kids who choose to bike, walk, or ride to school. In fact, Policy One of the Move Chapter of the Imagine Cary Community Plan states that we are to ensure safety for all users and modes. We are to do so by designing all transportation elements with safety in mind. So with that being said, we are requesting to establish school speed zone, school speed zones at three schools in Cary. The first school is Horton's Creek Elementary School, which is on O'Kelly Chapel Road. The proposed school zones are located on Horton's Creek Road, Yates Store Road, and O'Kelly Chapel Road. The second school is Pleasant Grove Elementary School, which is located on Pleasant Grove Church Road, which is also the location of the proposed school zone. The third and final school is Green Level High School, which will actually operate as Apex High School for the next two years, but the school zones will be operable for, for those two school years as well. The proposed school speed zones will be located along Green Level Church Road and Roberts Road. And it should be noted that the, all the equipment and signage necessary for the school speed zones are the responsibility of Wake County Public Schools, and they have all been installed. Tonight, we're asking council to adopt an ordinance authorizing the town clerk to amend the town traffic schedules, to add school speed zones for three schools in Cary, and to certify the concurring ordinance certificate from N C D O T.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. This seems like a no-brainer. What are the drawbacks? Any?
Just having to go through this process.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. There's a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Spencer. We now move to our last discussion item, fiscal year 2018, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan funding. John Genoche, did I say that right?
No.
No.
I got the Irish no. Help me out, Jack.
Scottish.
I'm striking out a little bit.
He doesn't have a lassie, he's just Scottish John.
Scottish John.
Scottish John.
Yeah, I'm called many things, that's just one of them. And that's the most complimentary, believe me. Good evening, council. The discussion item this evening is the adoption of the, the adoption of the twenty-eighteen, fiscal twenty-eighteen Annual Action Plan. The recommendation before you is that council approve the project proposals for the F Y twenty-eighteen Annual Action Plan, council adopt the F Y twenty-eighteen Annual Action Plan, and council authorize staff to submit the approved plan to HUD. The Annual Action Plan serves not only as the Town of Cary's application to the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, it's for our annual entitlement funds, but it also serves as a roadmap for council, staff, and the community for new community development projects. For fiscal twenty-eighteen, as in prior years, the bulk of C D G B funds will be directed towards support for affordable housing. This will be achieved through direct expenditure by the Town of Cary on its residential rehabilitation program, or through sub-recipient activity such as small repairs and mobility adoptions through programs operated by organizations such as Resourcies for Seniors and the Rebuilding Together of the Triangle. The Annual Action Plan also proposes support for homeownership, supported rent housing, and rental housing initiatives. The emphasis on housing activities in the twenty-eighteen A A P reflects the goals of the consolidated plan, and these are broadly support for affordable housing, support for special needs housing, and support for other community development needs. In the category of other community development needs, the Annual Action Plan also proposes support for social service provision for low to moderate income individuals through two organizations, primarily Dorcas Ministries and the White Oak Foundation. We also will proposing the funding of Transitions Life Care, which was formerly the, the hospice of Wake County. They provide palliative care to indigent individuals throughout Wake County. There we go. As some of you may have noticed, I'm slightly numerically dyslexic. The twenty-eighteen Annual Action Plan recommends the following HUD, C D B G, and local allocations. The funds available are new money of five hundred ninety-eight thousand and thirty-two dollars. This is all coming from HUD. This should be seen more as a return of funds to the town rather than the new money from the federal government. Basically, this is money which is collected from tax revenue. There are reprogrammed funds of three thousand ninety-two dollars. This is money left over from prior years which were not expended on the original activities. There is program income of a hundred and eight thousand. This is from a Section one oh eight loan which was made to the Meaton Inn to fund that development, and these are parts of these repayments. We also will be receiving affordable housing funds of four hundred thousand dollars already approved by council. Total funds available for, from the federal sources, seven hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. From town funds, four hundred thousand dollars, giving an overall total of one thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and one, one thousand, one hundred and nine, one million, one hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. As I said, I'm slightly numerically dyslexic. So I suspect that there may be questions. I have prepared a forty-unit slide presentation showing the background and the evolution of the Housing and Urban Development Corporate Department and the origins of the Community Development Block Grant. This may be of interest to aficionados of federal bureaucracy. However, Sean rather sagely advised me that perhaps it wasn't appropriate for this evening. So on that, I will accept any questions, because I'm sure there are many.
Questions?
No, I, I'd like to thank you, Scottish John, for walking through this for us. One of the motion, or what I'd like to say to, to the rest of my valued council members is the affordable housing is absolutely integral to what we do. It's part of our Cary Community Plan. There's a huge need, as we know, for affordable housing, and surprisingly enough, when it comes to Wake, when it comes to Wake County, we are the lowest offering government subsidized affordable housing, just one over Morrisville. We offer one, about one point two percent, I believe, government subsidized affordable housing. We're beaten out by Apex, Fuquay Arena, Holly Springs, and Raleigh, who has about five point two percent. So I really think this is an opportunity for us to increase the number of units that we have. We have more than seven hundred and forty units. It's an opportunity for us to do that, as well as continue the homeownership and rental properties that are being done by so many great organizations out there. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the list of C D B G funded projects and activities as part of the F Y two thousand and eighteen Annual Action Plan.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
Yeah. I have a couple of comments. One is that I think that the, you know, affordable housing, as I've met with people at Dorcas Ministries and talked about what affordable housing means, and also met with John several times and Phil concerning how we keep things affordable, many people that live in Cary could not afford to buy their own house again. They're seniors, they're on fixed income, and they've got houses that, that they go to qualify for a loan for their house they live in because the value of their house, they couldn't afford to live in anymore. So if something happens and they get behind on their mortgage payment, then they are out on the street, the house gets flipped, somebody, the bank, somebody makes some money on it, and that person becomes homeless or looking for affordable housing, and usually won't have a place to, to, to live that can be as affordable as where they currently live. And I believe our money in this regard can be better spent. I'm, I'm not gonna support the, I'm not gonna support this, this vote. I don't, I don't think it's the right use of our funds because, for several reasons, I wanted to ask some questions. It seems to me like a, a few meetings ago, when I wanted to make a motion early, I wasn't allowed to make a motion until all the comments had been made. Said the timing wasn't right, and tonight, we got straight off with a motion. So I would like to ask some questions of, is it true that we have a missed deadline for application for C D B G funds from Habitat? If it's not true, then explain that to us, please.
The, the deadline was extended by a week, actually, at the request of Dorcas and Transitions Life Care, who hadn't managed to get their applications in time for their original deadline submission, and we extended it to facilitate them. So Habitat didn't miss the original deadline. They could have actually submitted by the original date.
Okay. And secondly, from this comment from the Town of Cary website that Sherry made earlier, are, are we required to require a new thirty-day minimum for citizen comments about substantial amendments to the plan?
Yes, we are.
So was the Habitat plan a substantial change or not, going from twenty-eight originally to twenty-six down to seven?
So the original submission by Habitat for funds in the prior financial year was for the acquisition of the site. There was no substantial change there. The ultimate project development did change, obviously, and that was reflected in the current year application, and will be reflected in the K P R, basically, when we adjust our figures, but in terms of what they were proposing to do, in terms of the value of the site, in terms of location, in terms of the scope of the acquisition, no, it didn't change. It would be a minor amendment rather than a substantial amendment if it was an amendment at all, but in terms of acquisition, because it was the same acquisition for the same purpose, it's not an amendment.
Application for the same purpose, just not for the same number of people served?
True, yes.
Okay. And so you're saying that the application, your opinion, was all in order, even though there apparently were, were parts left out of, or were those, are the accurate saying parts were left out and not...
Yes, and, and somebody made the comment earlier on that it's difficult to assess the substitute per unit, and so we made, we made those calculations ourselves. So whether they provide them or not, we still make the same calculation because we check them out, so that we didn't regard that as being a significant impediment to this, to this, to the submission.
Yeah, I, I think as a, as stewards of the taxpayers' money, which is our money, then I think it behooves us to, to score and do things that actually make the biggest difference and, and impact the most people. So my comment about people who can't afford their own houses, I know we ran out of money last year in housing rehabilitation. We used it all up. And with, with time to spare and, and no money to spend for those houses, that enabled people to stay in, in those houses. And you and I visited a house that, that is probably the, I think you commented, the worst you'd ever seen, and those are money that could be spent on those things that are gonna keep more than, than seven people in their houses over the course of, you know, the hundred, the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars we're, we're proposing to build new houses that we don't even know, we know for sure they're gonna be future Cary residents. We don't know that they're current Cary residents, whereas we have current Cary residents that are paying... that are paying taxes in Carey that have fallen on for whatever reason that we can spend money on their houses to keep them in.
Yeah, I fully agree with that, and I think that's one of the most difficult things, basically, when you're doing the scoring, the scoring of activities, essentially. If you were to make a motion to increase the amount of budget available for the Affordable Housing Program, I'd be more than happy. But in terms of actually balancing those things out, the way, the way the scoring matrix works is you actually get more points if you're actually providing new units as opposed to repairing, which is why the Careying Place, for instance, scored less highly than, say, the Habitat project because they weren't providing additional units. One of the good things about, one of the unusual things about this year's funding RFP round, basically, was that we were able to more or less contain all of, all the projects within the funding available, simply by agreeing with two of the major project sponsors that would defer their, their applications till next year. They, in fact, were not ready to spend the money anyway. So both Dorcas, which is a capital investment, and the White Oak Foundation were happy to see the money to make an application for FY 19 because they would actually spend the money then. So the only issue left there really was the balance between Habitat and the project for the Careying Place, and that's very, very difficult. I mean, there's no easy way to answer that. Essentially, both are very good projects in their own rights, and both have issues related to them. But in terms of the project scoring matrix, Habitat, because it provides additional units, scores more highly than the Careying Place. But you can't, it's very difficult to do a like-for-like comparison.
Okay, and then to follow up on this process, so the original amount that Habitat asked for, the early, earlier this year, it was a higher number, and then there was a $50,000 that was in our public hearing before. Can you explain that?
$50,000 was a number which was a slightly confusing submission by Habitat, but when I clarified it with their fiscal staff, with Rachel, who was here speaking earlier, and the figure they were looking for was an additional $50,000 over the original figure. They had, somebody in there obviously suffers from numerical dyslexia, but that's a figure which we arrived at, and obviously that figure changed when the density changed from seven to nine units. I think as a point that Jake Galis was making earlier on, when you, when you spread, and Jason Barron made earlier on, when you spread, those costs are fixed, essentially, so the more units you have, the lower the unit cost is.
So we had a public hearing, and Habitat was in that public hearing, was spoken about by the public for $50,000?
Yes.
And now we came back tonight, and it's $135,000?
Yes.
Okay, for fewer units.
For fewer units, yes.
Yeah, that's why I think it's considered major, so I can't support the, I can't, so I would support an amendment to move some of that 135 to fully fund the other two, and not to take it all away, but I didn't have that chance, so we'll just have to go with this motion.
Well, I would like to address another comment you made. I want to make sure we're all understanding up here. I would never, ever prevent anybody from making a motion, so if you feel that way, please understand, you can always make a motion at any time about anything, whether you'll get a second or not is another question, but you're always able, and that's true to everybody at this table, I have always allowed this council to say anything they want, make any motion they want, and I've never stopped you. So make sure that you understand.
We can watch the tape, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I apologize then. If I made a mistake, I apologize, but you're always allowed to make a motion. Okay, getting back to the task at hand.
Well, just one follow-up to that point, and that point is that regardless if it's before the motion or after, we've always had the ability for discussion. So, and in that discussion, if the points you made sway that, that motion, that'll, it'll be noted so, you know, in the, in the vote. Now, my, my purpose for seconding is, I understood the comments that Lori had, and I welcome, and I wanted to get to the discussion, so I welcomed the idea of seconding. It was not to curtail discussion, so I want to make sure that's understood.
And just one note on my motion. The reason I made the motion, Mr. Mayor, was because you asked, are there any questions? And nobody asked a question, so I thought it was appropriate time to make a motion.
There you go. Ms. Robinson?
But now I do have a question.
Perfect.
Please.
Too late.
Please. Oh, no questions? Oh, what happened to John? Sorry.
I didn't. Standing up there entertains more questions.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Really quickly, so one of the concerns that some residents had was the fact that Careying Place didn't have as much access to outside funds as Habitat. Is that a consideration when these applications are reviewed?
It is a consideration, and actually, it slightly works against them, basically, because one of the things we look at is fiscal stability and long-term relationship and sources of funds, and Habitat actually scored more highly. The scoring system isn't perfect, obviously, because it's designed, basically, for larger projects, but it does tend to mitigate against smaller projects by newer organizations, so, but we have the ability to adjust that, and actually, many of the speakers who spoke earlier displayed almost encyclopedic knowledge of the community development block grant program, and I'd be very happy to meet with any of them if they would like to join a focus group to look at how we improve the process for next year.
Oh, good. Okay, that'd be great. Can you explain to us what the report means when it says funding, for this for Careying Place, funding for this project is proposed for deferral until fiscal year 2019? Does that mean that the application is hauled open, or they're invited to reapply?
They're invited to reapply with understanding that they would be, they would get priority over other projects.
I see, okay, that's good. All right.
Other comments, questions?
Just a few comments to kind of expand on one Mr. George made, that these funds should go to help or impact the most people, I believe it was, and current Carey residents. I think some of these funds will actually go to help make a better project in the Scottish Hills area, which I think impacts the folks that live in Scottish Hills, which are current Carey residents. So I kind of tend to look at it this way. I actually love the fact that we have an apolitical process, while it's maybe not perfect, and maybe might need some refinement, that it takes politicians out of the process and lets professionals do their job. If there is an opportunity for a focus group or interdepartmental type of team to help make it an even better apolitical process, I think that's wonderful. In regards to the housing rehab, that we actually ran out of money, I think, last year, we actually increased the funding for housing rehab this year to $300,000, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Comments already been made regarding infrastructure costs and density, you know, one thing we heard a lot of when the Habitat project came to us was folks' concerns regarding stormwater runoff, and rightfully so. You know, they've got existing concerns there. We sent a message that we expect that, we want their stormwater mitigation and their BMPs or whatever to be, to exceed code, to exceed town standards, and I believe these funds will help accomplish that. So I think that's the applicant, as well as the town, trying to be responsive to some of the things that we heard. I wish we could fund all of the requested projects, but as with everything and anything in town, we never have enough money to do everything we want to do. But every year, we have increased the funds that we provide for affordable housing or housing rehab, or some of these wonderful programs that we have, and I think we'll continue to do exactly that. I'm going to refrain from making political comments at this time.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Mr. Yara?
No, I appreciate the questions that we've been asking. I know when you said there might be many questions, you were looking right at me, I felt, but I think the important ones have been, have been asked. Mr. George, you had some great questions. I think the citizens who raised those issues, questions who asked, really thank you for that, they disturbed me very much when I heard some of those questions. But better than the questions, better than citizens bringing up were your answers, John. I think you answered those questions very, very well and gives me more trust in the, in the process. It does hit me, as I think about this, that a focus group or a work session or something should be in order, not just for citizens, but for us as well, before next year's round, go-round on this. I'd like to understand the scoring better myself. I'd like to not necessarily inject politicism into this or personal opinions, but at least be able to understand how we got to this point. I just feel we shouldn't be discussing a lot of these things at the 11th hour right now. We, this should have happened sooner. So I would like to see something, if the, if the staff can, can pull something off before the next go-round to have us understand this better. Perhaps we need to give, it's not political, but we need to give direction. It's what we're here for. Perhaps there's more direction needed in the process. I don't know. I know if I were to reswizzle all these things now, they would come out different than what it looks like today, but I'm not about to do that. It's like when we have a site plan and we try to redesign a building right here at the council table at the last minute. I never liked doing that, so I'm not going to suggest reswizzling anything. I know it wouldn't be my, this wouldn't be my way of coming out with, with these numbers, but it follows the process, and I have to, that's what we're here for, to trust the staff process, too, and I believe you have followed that, that process, so. So I support the motion, even though I'm kind of disturbed by the whole process that got us here.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll follow up from what Mr. France said. I do, I was encouraged by several people to say, hey, your neighborhood's going to get a better project if we spend the money on this. And to me, if I, it's like bringing the pork home. It's like, do I vote for something so my neighborhood looks better, and spends more money for my neighborhood, that maybe it could spend, be spent better other places and help more people in other ways? So, so I don't, in that regard, I think it would be for me to selfishly, in a way, make that, that vote to say that I want it, I want the project to look better in my neighborhood because it's my neighborhood versus helping more people, and that's why I'm going to not support it.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
Yeah. I mean, you know, a lot of this discussion is kind of the big cloud over us from some of the frustrations from the Scottish Hills things, like, you know, let's just put that on the table. Who's kidding who? There's, there's that air, and then when, when you have folks that have just felt like the, the process has let them down, or they feel that the trust hasn't been earned, you're going to get this kind of, where it's a never-ending debate on the details of a plan. I mean, that's just the way it is. But, you know, one of the comments that came up in the, during one of the budget work sessions was this discussion around, we have so many requests facing us, and we have to, we have to unfortunately sort through that between the essential and some of the things that have to become expendable. It's just, it's just life in the big city. I would kind of like to see, I mean, if you wanted to keep kicking this can down, you can make the argument, why aren't you looking at the government entities that are supposed to be doing this? That's not the role of town government. We assume it because we want Carey better, we want Carey greater. We, we recognize that we're a diverse community, we recognize that we're an inclusive community, and we want everyone welcome here, and we want to deal with affordable housing. You know, your comment about the, we're the least affordable, you know, if you go to those in the political realm that like to remind us of that, I like to remind them that when you look at that data and you look at their communities where their affordability is, look at some of the crime they're dealing with, and what is that community doing instead of bragging about their percent of affordable housing? What are they doing to make that a livable affordable housing, so that their people that need that help are truly, truly welcomed there and embraced and helped? We do that here at Carey. We do that at Ren Drive. We have made our affordable housing a welcoming place for families and a place to reach out and be part of Carey. So, you know, if there was, if I wanted to get stuck on principle, I could argue, I'm not going to vote for this because I don't think it helps that, but it does. We are helping, and in this case with Habitat. I don't like that we're giving them money, I'll say that. I'll say that right up front because I recall some conversations that said, we have other sources of funding, but the reality is, this funding will help make that product better for that community. It's not a matter of bringing pork to that community, it's a matter of being sensitive to those people that live there. It's a matter of caring about those people who felt their trust was violated. It's a matter about saying, you're going to have seven new neighbors, and they are going to be wonderful neighbors. They're going to be, you will be proud to have them as neighbors. Why do I say that? Because the facts show that that's the way it's been in other Habitat communities. So in the end, this money helps make a product that we approved even better for that neighboring community. And like I didn't quite understand the argument about density, when you're bringing that much less density to that property, that property is going to built, be built to Carey standards, and now with the assistance of additional funding, it is our hope, we can't guarantee it, but is our hope that not only will we mitigate stormwater, but we hopefully can improve it. So I'm sorry, folks, but in the end, we have to make tough decisions, and in the end, right now, this moment in town, time, we ought to seize the moment for that community. Let's complete it, let's get it done right, and then, as was explained earlier, let's look at those other charities in need, and as always, Carey will end up stepping up and helping them. I just truly believe that, so.
Other comments or questions? We have a motion on the table to approve the staff recommended funding. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Our amended agenda item is next, and I would entertain a motion to go into closed session, and once we return from closed session, we'll have a quasi-judicial hearing. A motion, please.
Oh, that's me. Sorry, I didn't, it's been, it's been a couple of weeks since I remember it. Pursuant to GS 143 31811A and three, I mean that we hold a closed session, to consult with attorneys employed by and or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143 31810E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we now go into closed session. So, meeting at this time, and we move into our quasi-judicial hearing. Our first evidentiary hearing is 17DP 042, Cary Academy Science Building Edition. This case is before us tonight because the applicant has requested a modification to town development standards. As a reminder to those in attendance, even though we are in the council chambers, an evidentiary hearing is more like a court case. Council acts like the judge and can only accept evidence that is competent material and substantial. The North Carolina and the United States constitutions give the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing that council must comply with. The Constitution really ties our hands in what evidence we can accept. I apologize in advance for what might seem to be burdensome or a complex process. We will consider only competent material and substantial evidence from anyone who testifies. By law, we can only accept testimony from expert witnesses regarding whether this development will affect property values and whether it will increase traffic resulting from this development will pose a danger to public safety. And any opinion has to be from an expert witness. To those that are with us this evening intending to testify that are not qualified as experts, we can accept testimony from you that is factual issues and what you have observed. We cannot accept your opinion. Our contractual attorney, Mr. Gad, who is sitting to my left, will help us determine who's an expert and who's not, and what evidence we can consider. The hearing procedures, detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. At this time, we'll pause to allow those individuals who'd like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths, and council will wait until that has been completed.
My wife's sister's husband, and I saw him when I was in New York City.
Now, at this time, I'll ask council members if they've had any site visits that spartak communications, financial relationship, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left with Mr. Yaroff.
I have not.
Ms. Bush?
I have not.
Ms. France?
No, sir.
I have not. Mr. Smith?
I'm not.
Robinson?
I have not.
Mr. George, all right. Based on the disclosures we've heard from our council members, at this time, I invite any party to this matter if you have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing no objection, we'll continue, and I'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing. Mr. Wilson of our staff will introduce this hearing.
Good evening, council. As indicated, this item is a quasi-judicial request and associated public hearing for a school. Cary Academy is a private school serving grades six through 12 on a 66-acre campus that's located at the intersection of North Harrison Avenue and Northwest Cary Parkway. The school opened in 1997 and currently serves around 750 students. The school is proposing to construct a 22,602-square-foot addition to an existing building and add 13 parking spaces. The location of the addition is shown here in red. As you can see, there are multiple buildings and facilities that comprise the school's campus. The proposed addition represents a 9.8% expansion to the school's existing 230,662-square-feet of floor area. Since the expansion exceeds 5%, the town's land development ordinance automatically requires certain improvements to be made with relation to the site. In this regard, the land development ordinance also provides the opportunity for the applicant to present justifications and request modifications and/or relief from these requirements from the council. There are three such modifications before you this evening. I will briefly identify each of them at this time. The first improvement has to do with the site's street frontage on North Harrison Avenue, which is classified as a thoroughfare. As illustrated here on the town's adopted planned roadway width map, which is a component of the Imagine Cary Community Plan, it is the town's plan for North Harrison Avenue to increase in size and capacity as it moves northward towards Interstate 40. These planned increased cross-sections are illustrated on this portion of the planned roadway width map. As you start at the bottom of the map, on the pink line, that is North Harrison Avenue, and move north, you can see the pink segment, which is intended to ultimately be four lanes with a median, transitions to a purple segment, which represents six lanes with a median, and then ultimately transitions to a red segment, which represents seven lanes from Weston Parkway to Interstate 40. At the present time, North Harrison Avenue is constructed as a five-lane cross-section along the majority of the school's frontage. Meeting the requirements of the planned roadway widths map would require the dedication of additional right-of-way and the construction of one-half a median and a third northbound lane, which would be one-half of the missing ultimate cross-section. The town's land development ordinance also requires that reclaimed water lines be installed if a site is within one of the town's two reclaimed water service areas. This site is located in the eastern portion of the town's northern reclaimed water services area. As such, the ordinance requires that a 12-inch reclaimed water line be installed along the site's North Harrison Avenue frontage. Finally, the town's land development ordinance requires that all above-ground power lines be buried underground unless not possible or impractical. The school currently has overhead utilities running along its approximately 1,200 linear feet of frontage on North Harrison Avenue. As part of this hearing tonight, the applicant is requesting relief from the road improvements, the reclaimed water line improvements, and seeking permission to keep the existing overhead power lines in place. At this time, the applicant will give his presentation, and then staff will return with observations regarding these requests.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Keith Burns. I'm from the Nixon Pruitt Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and I hoped to have a much simpler presentation tonight, complete with a few color slides as you requested last week. Because there is a little bit of confusion about some things occasionally. So, we're ultimately, head of school for Cary Academy is going to speak, because it appears that staff and we are understanding the engineering of this the same way, have an engineer and architect here who will be available, but who probably will not speak. As you just heard, there are three issues we're requesting relief regarding road widening, the installation of a reclaimed water line, and the power line relocation. Would tell you that those things are not, at the moment, desirable. They have, they create benefit that would not yet exist. For example, a reclaimed water line that has no connection on either end is not desirable at the moment. Likewise, a section of roadway that has no connection on either end is not desirable at the moment. And relocating power lines, when there's no engineering going on for the utilities related to a water line or to sidewalk or other infrastructure, not desirable, particularly in the context of doing so when you would disrupt the mature landscaping that you see along Harrison. So we think we meet that first element of the test. And then secondly, we would also tell you that we meet the final and the second element of the test, which is that this would be, a payment in lieu of zero would be consistent with the town's objectives. There are two things that I would say around that. The first is that there is a meaningful educational benefit, and you'll hear more about that. The total cost of doing these things, if you offered a payment in lieu, or if you did them, would be around $1,005,000, and $1,005,000 is just not sustainable in connection with this. Requiring that payment would deny Cary Academy the ability to offer the educational value associated with these projects, and again, you'll hear more about that. And the other thing that I would tell you is that it would not be proportional, it would not be equitable, or creating a sort of rational nexus to say that this small improvement on the Cary Academy campus, which generates no traffic at all, has no impact on Harrison, generates no need for reclaimed water, to impose on a project of that scale this sort of burden doesn't create the kind of equitable result or the rational nexus between burden and activity. and activity that this council or the Cary code would seek to create. So, with that little bit introduction, I'm going to run through a few slides, and Mike will come up and give you a little more about Cary Academy and what we're doing. So, here is the site. I think I'm going the wrong way. So, there's the existing building and the new building. You'll see that there's some labs that are being proposed, some maker spaces being proposed. Not anything that is a new classroom. We're not increasing student enrollment. We're not doing anything to increase the amount of activity on the campus. We're simply shifting activity among buildings. We're adding three parking, thirteen parking spaces. This is not, this is a matter of convenience, not of need. The code does not require us to add any parking spaces. Again, this is because faculty and after-school want to be able to be closer to this. And Mike will talk more about those slides as he comes up. The road addition, this is a cross-section on top of what exists now. It is a five-lanes, center-turn lane. Proposed is six lanes, so three on each side of a median, and to do that, we would need to add sixteen feet of asphalt along the entire frontage of the academy with related improvements to stormwater, curb, gutter, sidewalk, those things. It would require the dedication of an additional twelve point five feet of right-of-way. We are making that dedication, so this will be available should this come to pass in the future. If we were to construct that, we would end up with the same five lanes plus an extraneous lane off to the Cary Academy side that would not have a receiving lane on either end, or a transmitting lane, I should say. So, very limited benefit there. It would be stripped out and be effectively of no use. That is an aerial that helps you understand the size of the impacted portion, and you can see that there's a substantial amount of water line and street improvement that has to be made across that twelve-hundred-plus linear feet. In blue, you can see there's a substantial amount of mature landscaping that would be disrupted and would have to come out. And you can see with the church above and the veterans park across the street subdivision that's mature further into town, the likelihood that the street improvements would be made any time in the near future seems pretty remote. Again, going back to my point, that this is probably undesirable at the present time. Another shot of the power lines, those are two-phase Duke power lines. Cost of moving those is substantial. There are fiber optics in the area that would also need to be moved. And then, with respect to the reclaimed water line, what you see there before you is, taken from the town's website, it shows the current location of reclaimed water lines in the area, and the reclaimed water. All right, so there's a fly-in that's not working on this. The reclaimed water line that would be required begins here about where I'm pointing the cursor and extends down to the entrance or just below. And the point of that is to understand that that reclaimed water line, if it were put in place, would not connect in either direction. It would simply be a pipe in the ground capped on both ends. So, again, not something that would be desirable at this time. And with that, I'll ask Mike to come up and introduce himself and talk a little bit more about the benefit of the project and the goals of this project.
Thank you for the opportunity to present a little bit about this project to council tonight. My name is Mike Erhardt. I'm the head of Cary Academy. I've been at the school now for four years, and last year, we had the good fortune of celebrating our twentieth year here in Cary. And in that short time, I think the school's established a wonderful reputation, not only as an independent school, but we hope as a good community partner. Our students endeavor to do a lot of good work in the area, have relationships with local elementary schools. The school has done a number of different projects to outreach to public school colleagues in the area. In particular, when the school was founded, and our focus was a lot on educational technology. We hosted a number of conferences, both local conferences and regional conferences for educators. And that continues on for the school. Next year, during MLK Day, we're going to partner with the Triangle Uplift Foundation to run a youth innovation summit that will be open to area elementary and middle school students. And so, we celebrate our twentieth anniversary, and we're very proud to be a part of the Cary community. We think the school represents the best of Cary and the best of the triangle. We believe in innovation. We believe in collaboration. We believe in community, and we try to have our educational programs do that as well. And so, one of the things, then, that brought us to this session here today was our current strategic plan that we launched in 2015. And as a part of that plan, we looked back at the history of the school, and we looked at where education is going, and in particular, because the school has liked to keep its finger on the pulse, if you will, of future trends in education. And one of the things we saw was that the way our students were learning and the way our teachers were teaching had transitioned considerably since the school was founded and first built out. A little bit of history there. The school took pride when we first started, and I got to see this firsthand because I went back to the news footage back when the school was announced in nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven, and we had a computer on every desk in every classroom of the school. And the big thing back in the day was creating webpages, and there was one news report, and the reporter was sort of breathless talking about how students were going to get email, and they were going to communicate with their teachers via email at the time. And it sounds sort of quaint today, but I was a technology specialist back then as well, and I do remember those days and how heady they were. And we're actually in a time like that right now. So, what has changed, and what we noticed on our campus, were that our teachers and our students were no longer bound by desktop computers. We had been a laptop school since about two thousand and seven, and we had begun to use online technologies to extend the learning environment well beyond the confines of a regular classroom. And point of fact, I would walk down the halls, and I would bring tours of students and other educators through the halls, and I'd be stepping over students who were sitting in the halls, collaborating on the ground because the classroom was filled with classroom activities, and their learning had spilled out into the hallways and into other spaces. So, as we were embarking on our strategic plan, we got to talking a little bit about the kinds of educational opportunities we wanted for our students moving forward, and we realized that one of the things that our school needed was to look at those spaces and to have more flexible, different-sized spaces for different types of learning that happens. And so, if you walked on our campus today, in many ways, it feels a little bit like a college campus. There are students that are working in a variety of capacities. Our whole campus has wireless spaces, but what we don't quite have are the spaces for them to actually go and collaborate in meaningful ways with the right kinds of spaces. And one of our inspirations has been the Hunt Library. So, if anyone's been over there to see the Hunt Library, you sort of get a sense. But in order to do that, we actually need to get rid of classrooms. We need to take classrooms away. We need to knock walls out. We need to create open spaces, glassed-in, small conference rooms, medium-sized conference rooms for students to be, and teachers to be able to do this kind of work. But our current footprint doesn't allow that because all of our classes are used right now, because we are full. And so, that got us onto this journey in this new building. But one of the things that's really important about this is that we're asking to build a building so that we can move our science labs in there, so we can take those science labs out of commission and create these kinds of spaces in our current upper school building. So, that's ultimately, when we say there's no net student add here, it's because we're repurposing spaces, but in order to do that, we have to add these spaces. And so, that sort of led us to sort of where we are today, and I'll give you just a couple of quick things about the science building. We chose a science building. Cary Academy believes in technology. We believe in STEM education, but we are proudly liberal arts. We proudly believe that our students should be well-rounded when they are prepared to go to college. We chose science over a math building or over a language center because, at twenty years old, our original science labs were in desperate need now of refurbishment. And refurbishments of science labs are expensive, and when you start talking to folks, you might as well think about building something new. And so, that's why we decided to do the science building, and it's given us great opportunities to add new courses and add new programs into the, into our offerings. For example, an accelerated calculus program that uses online technology to take students through two years of calculus in one year. An advanced biotechnology course that has students doing DNA testing and analysis and being prepared to be lab techs when they go off into university, and as freshmen and sophomores, being able to get some really coveted positions in their university labs. And so, those kinds of courses, we have already begun to load into our program, and now we need to have the facilities in order to really support them and really to see them fly. So, what you see here is the new addition adjacent to an existing building on campus, and we will have eight science labs going in this facility and a maker space that right now is currently in an old room in our library will be moved there. And so, the other part will be renovations of existing spaces, and we'll be moving our math department into that space. And so, you get a little bit of a sense of what we're hoping to do in these spaces is allow more light, allow more visibility for learning. We've always felt like we want to be transparent in what's going on at the school. We love hosting schools and students and educators on our campus, but too often, when you go into schools, you see walls and you can't really see and feel that kind of learning. And so, this space, we hope, will be a showcase space for the kinds of twenty-first century labs that we're proud to be associated with here in the town. And so, you can see some more open spaces in the facility. In the corner on the left-hand space, that's one of the little collaboration spaces, glassed-in, à la Hunt Library, so that students can collaborate and work together. And so, all of these things have got our community quite excited, got our science teachers quite excited, but are linked to a larger plan to repurpose existing spaces on campus. And so, that brings us a little bit to the limitations, then, of what we're thinking about doing. We are full. When we did our strategic plan, we did engender, at the board level, a conversation about whether or not Cary Academy should grow. There is the demand. We have waiting lists in every grade. We have an attrition rate of only two percent, and so, we feel sort of, I feel guilty sometimes in terms of we'd like to serve more families in the area. But the school and the board was very clear that we are purposefully the size that we are so that we can have the kind of community that can foster students knowing each other at an entire grade level, faculty knowing all of their students, and that community is sized at the right size for where we are right now. And so, there are other ways, we think, we can help the community through our summer programming, through conferences and ways of outreach, but right now, we're very comfortable with the size that we're at. So, that's something that came out of our last strategic plan. We also do have some other limitations to growth, even if we changed our mind down the road and said, well, it is time to grow. Parking is a significant limitation for us. Our gym sizes are limitations. Our theater is, can accommodate our upper school right now, cannot accommodate any more students, and so, our theater is a limitation, as is our cafeteria. So, we have several physical limitations that even if we added more classes, would put a natural limit on how big Cary Academy can be in our current master plan for the campus. I'd also like to say that I appreciate the conversation about Harrison Avenue because you would not find a school administrator ever poo-pooing traffic flow. Car pickup and morning drop-off are some of the biggest headaches for any school, and we spend considerable amount of time thinking about traffic flow, thinking about how our students can get to school safely, our families can get to school and pick their kids up with the least amount of hassle. And so, as a part of this master facilities plan that led us to this building design and the next phase for some renovations, was a significant look at all of the traffic flow and the pickup and the drop-off. And so, we paid attention to that, and we've actually made a number of changes internally to our traffic flow to make things safer and to make it smoother. And that, this was actually the first time in my career, I'm twenty-plus years as an educator, that I actually surveyed a group of faculty and students about something that was changed, and they all universally liked the traffic flow change that we made on our campus in order to make it smoother. And so, I just, I mention that because this is a significant issue, and by no means would we ever say that we wanted to have not enough lanes of traffic coming into a school, because that's just not true. But in this particular case, because we're not adding any students to the school, it doesn't seem to make sense to us, and certainly at the cost that we're looking at in order to do this. That's significant for us because we are a private, not-for-profit organization. We are tuition-supported by our families, and this project will be supported by donations coming from our current families. They're very excited about the prospect of supporting the Science Center, but because we're not growing as a school, I don't think we would be able to raise the money in order to widen Harrison Avenue, considering the lack of growth for the school. And so, it would cause us some problems in order to be able to fund this project and be able to move this forward, which, for us, is an integral part of our strategic plan and hopefully allowing us to keep Cary Academy at the forefront of educational innovation. And certainly, it's a point of pride for us, and we like to represent Cary in the best possible ways. And so, with that, I think that would end my comments, and certainly turn things back over to Keith if he has anything more to say, but open things up for questions as well. Thank you.
I'll offer just a couple of words of quick summary, and then I'll certainly be delighted to entertain any questions. So, you see here a slide of the cost of this. Imposing that cost on a project of this scale that has no impact on Harrison or the utility man's or anything in the area would not further any of the beneficial educational items that you've heard, including scholarship-driven activity, inviting the community into the school, and the training of the students who are there. Further imposing those sorts of costs would not bear any sort of rational nexus, and would strike me as being relatively inequitable, which I think are core concepts for the town and for the town's ordinance. You heard earlier that because none of those utilities, none of those improvements would have any immediate impact, their installation at the moment would be undesirable. So, on those bases, on behalf of the applicant, I request that you accept payment in lieu of nothing, of zero dollars, and approve this request. We're all here available, and as I mentioned, we have an engineer and an architect here with us as well to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll invite speakers who have been sworn in and wish to speak in support of the application to approach the podium at this time. Anybody who would like to speak in support, seeing no one will continue. We now open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request. As a reminder that those testifying, please limit your testimony to facts that you know. The applicant's representative has a right to object to your testimony. He or she may object while you're speaking. They have the right to do that, and our contractual attorney sitting beside me will help council determine what evidence we may consider. This time, I'll invite the first speaker in opposition to approach. Seeing no one will continue, we now call on the staff to provide professional observations about the requests.
As indicated, we will provide staff observations at this time regarding the three requests and modifications. As previously noted earlier in the presentation, the Imagine Cary Community Plan's planned roadway width map calls for the ultimate build-out of a six-lane divided median cross-section along the school's North Harrison frontage. This future cross-section is reflected by the purple segment on this map. We note that the corridor today currently transitions from a four-lane divided median cross-section that runs from Maynard up to Northwest Cary Parkway, which is shown in pink on this exhibit, at which point the road then transitions to a five-lane cross-section without a median, which is shown in green. At Weston Parkway, North Harrison Avenue then transitions into a seven-lane cross-section without a median, which is shown in red. It so happens that the pink and red segments already match the ultimate widths that are shown on the planned roadway width map. The green, five-lane cross-section is the section that has not yet been improved to the planned six-lane median divided cross-section, which is now shown here in purple. So, it is this segment that is the subject of the applicant's request and modification. We note that the applicant is proposing to dedicate twelve-and-a-half feet of right-of-way, which is the amount needed to construct the ultimate six-lane divided median cross-section along the school's frontage. In preparing for this meeting, we did research our records and determined that this would be the first deeded right-of-way for this segment of the overall corridor. Recognizing that the proposed addition to the school campus does not add any students, it simply provides additional space for existing students. it simply provides additional space for existing students, we note that if the improvements were made at this time, they would not be serving any additional traffic capacity associated with the school's proposed expansion. In addition, they would not provide any traffic benefit on north Harrison at this time, since the adjoining properties have not been improved, and thus the road would continue to operate per the existing five-lane cross-section. Peering ahead, we note that if the improvements are needed in the future, then the cost of these improvements would be the town's responsibility, although right-of-way would have already been dedicated at this time for that purpose. Presently, though, this improvement is a project that is neither programmed nor budgeted. Although the site is located in the town's northern reclaimed water service area, it is located at the edge of this area. As illustrated here, extending reclaimed water line along the school's frontage would serve to help loop this edge, although it would not physically connect to the existing lines in northwest Cary Parkway or further to the north on north Harrison Avenue. For that matter, the closest connection would be approximately 600 feet to the west in the Beechtree neighborhood. Since it would not connect to another active line if constructed, the line along the school's frontage would remain inactive until other connections are made. Given that extensions along the town's Veterans Freedom Park would be needed to establish a functional connection in any direction, this improvement and associated cost could alternatively be handled by the town if and when this improvement is constructed. No new students are proposed and no additional traffic impacts are anticipated. If the road and reclaimed water line improvements are not going to be constructed at this time, then the existing above-ground power lines will not be touched by the work associated with the proposed expansion. Under this scenario, the limited scope of the project could be considered when determining whether or not the requirement to bury the overhead lines is impractical. So in summary, there are three modifications being requested of the council as part of this application this evening. Modification A is related to the widening of north Harrison Avenue. Modification B is related to the required installation of the reclaimed water line on north Harrison Avenue. And modification C is related to the requirement to bury the overhead power lines along Harrison Avenue. As part of the council's consideration of these requirements, we note that there are different approval criteria associated with these requests. The findings for modifications A and B are, are the widening and reclaimed water line unnecessary or undesirable at the present, but necessary in the future? And, does the payment of $0 in lieu of improvements advance the goals and purposes of the ordinance? The finding for modification C is, is the burying of overhead utilities prohibited or impractical? Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Burns, any cross-examination?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Any party believe there's new evidence been presented this evening that requires a continuance of this hearing? I'm seeing no from both parties, so we'll continue. And we'll start the deliberative phase of the hearing and open it up to council for questions or comments. I have questions about, and I'll let Mr. Wilson, since he's standing by the mic there, answer this, about the reclaimed water line. I'm just curious if Cary Academy has irrigation, which is what reclaimed water is used for? And if they do, are they using potable water or non-potable water or what they're using? Do you know?
I do not know, but I suspect we have someone here who can help with that.
Because I think, out of the three modifications, that might be, if we have a water shortage, that might be desired first. And so that's why I asked the question.
Certainly, that Cary Academy does have irrigation. It's non-potable water.
Okay. Thank you. So even if they had the reclaimed water lines, they're probably likely not going to use it? Is that what I'm hearing?
I have asked that question myself, Mr. Mayor, and the answer is no, we would not be using it. We're happy with our current system. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Other questions from council members?
I have a question about the power lines relocated to underground. Obviously, in this community and Cary, we very much like the fact that our power lines are underground. Was this put above ground when the road was constructed? You know, can you give some history? Because this is an unusual road to still have the lines above.
I'm going to see if Transportation Facilities folks can speak to the history of the last set of improvements to north Harrison Avenue.
And unfortunately, I don't have a lot of information to offer other than just general observation. It's not unusual for the overhead lines to be there. When a new project comes along to do work with a capital project, if funds are available and if it makes sense, we will work towards putting it underground. Now, this is all before the latest LDO requirements to underground the utilities, so...
Have we had instances where there have been road improvements and the burying has occurred on some of these larger major thoroughfares?
I think Davis Drive, I think it's not buried along part of...
No, I meant like somewhere a developer had the requirement to do it.
Oh, I see.
Because we did Davis Drive, right?
We did Davis Drive, but we didn't...
But we didn't bury the overhead lines? So does that mean that the LDO changed in between when we... Why weren't we required and now we're requiring to...
I believe that's the case, that the LDO changed between.
Okay.
I can speak to that.
I mean, I would, you know...
To answer that question, the Land Development Ordinance was amended in June of 2016.
Oh.
And the ability to request modifications to the burying overhead utilities requirement was being handled at the staff level and has now changed and is a quasi-judicial item for the council.
Oh, another item for QJ.
Yeah, right. I share your concerns, but I think if they were widening the road, or if somebody was widening the road, then it makes sense at that time. But for many of the reasons I think we've heard, the mature landscaping, not widening the road and stuff, to go in and disturb all of that to bury the utilities at this time doesn't make sense.
No, no, I get it. I was just kind of interested in the history.
Right.
Other comments or questions?
Was the widening of this road or the six-lane here with the median, when we removed the northwest Cary Parkway extension, was that, was it considered holistically? Because it seems to me like I heard that we'd be better off spending money at Weston, improving a different corridor, which puts the traffic further toward 40, and it seems to me like there's less need for six lanes here if we're not going to have Cary Parkway dumping from both directions. But was that looked at when we nixed the Cary Parkway?
I'm going to let Transportation Facilities Director Jerry Jensen... Oh, no, sorry. Ken Don here.
So, we did do future volumes for the entire area when we had the traffic study commission for the area. And for north Harrison Avenue, for the 2040 volumes, which is 20 years in the future, we're showing about 30,500 trips a day. Currently, we have recent traffic counts that were done in, let me get a bright piece of paper in front of me, in March of this year, that's actually showing on this section approximately 29,000 vehicles per day using that. So, it's pretty much going to continue to operate, or we anticipate it will continue to operate where it is today. Those volumes are starting to reach the limit for a five-lane section, but things are still operating very well along the corridor.
Okay.
But it's still in the plan? No change was made to anything except nixing the extension?
And that is correct.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
I have a question about the motion. Since they're offering to do the, donate the right-of-way, should I mention that as a condition if I make a motion to approve?
That is part of the proposal. It's part of the...
So then I don't have to call that out?
You do not need to.
Awesome. I make a motion...
We can't go into motion till we close the public comment portion. Any other comments before we close the public comment portion? Okay, we'll close the comment portion. I'll recognize Ms. Robinson for the motion.
All right, I make a motion to approve modification requests. For the reason discussed, I approve that, I move that we approve the modification request made by the applicant, as the requests meet all of the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. Just to be clear, we're talking about all three modifications.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions needed on this item?
Nope.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Gad, everything in order?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll close this public hearing, and that completes our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
There's a motion.
Back it.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
This has been a production of Cary TV. Visit the Town of Cary's website, latownofcary.org.